Thank you. All right, welcome to the Wednesday, October sixteenth, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed for those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. Noting that language. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves. We will start here in the boardroom with Commissioner Casino.
I'm Eric Casino, I serve at large and I live in the Lacey UGA.
Commissioner Peston, District Five.
Commissioner Baumbacher, who lives and serves in District One.
Derek Day, I live in District One.
Colin Bartlett, I am representative at large for District Five, I live in Tumwater.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
And Sandy Kaiser, District Three.
Thank you Sandy, and I think I saw Joel on, Joel are you there? There is Joel.
There is Joel.
Fishburne will be a little bit late joining us on Zoom.
Hi Joel, can you hear us?
Yeah, I saw, I saw that he had deleted.
You are muted. Yeah, you see.
Yep, I can hear you, Joel Hanson, District Three.
Thank you Joel. All right, and have folks had a chance to look at the agenda?
To approve the agenda for October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, all right, it's moving seconded, any discussion on the agenda? All right, all in favor of approving our agenda? Any names? All right, that motion passes, our agenda is approved. Moving on, have folks had a chance to look at our meeting minutes from the second? And if so, I would entertain a motion to approve those and accept the recording as the official record.
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have approved our minutes for October second. And with that, we will move on to public comment. It looks like we don't have anybody here in the boardroom who wants to provide comment. Do we have folks online who are interested? Okay, all right, I think everybody knows the drill at this point. But you'll get three minutes and go ahead and raise your hand, we'll promote you to speaker. And you'll again have three minutes and please state your name and your address. And, and with that, we will, we will start with Betsy Norton.
Hi, my name is Betsy Norton, I live in Olympia. And I just wanted to make a comment about open houses. The Barholdings Open House last week had no public information available, even though I know the counties had applications on file since December. And there was, there were a lot of public docket comments as well from last spring. None of that was available before the open house took place, so as a result, all we had was the developer collateral to look at and the developers to tell us stuff. And there was, there were a few posters, just generic information about zoning. But I don't think it was enough to kind of correct the, I won't call it misinformation, but the advocacy done by the developers there. So I would just request, anytime you guys have an open house, it's supposed to be sponsored by the county, that you provide as much information as possible to the public beforehand, so that people can actually get some real data to look at and to consider and talk about. Thank you.
Right, thank you Betsy. Anybody else like to provide comment? All right. With that, we will move along, we're moving quite quick tonight. I'm going to jinx it though.
Well, we have a special guest from the East Coast, so it would be good if we.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, moving on to continued business, we have work session twenty-four for Thurston, two thousand forty-five. It is our intro to development regulations.
Well, that special guest for a lot of you who've been on the Planning Commission for years is Maya Teepel. For those who are new to the Commission, this really is a special opportunity to hear from one of Thurston County's rock star planners. She is on the East Coast though, which is why we don't ask her to attend many Planning Commission meetings, because of course, it's nine thirty her time and she's got two young kids. But I'm going to turn it over to Maya and the rest of the team to go through the development regulations.
Thanks Ashley, Maya Teepel, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I'm joined tonight by Marcus Johnson, who is on our consultant team for the Thurston two thousand forty-five periodic update, part of the Makers team, and tonight we're presenting on the development regulations. I am expecting another consultant to join us, so if she pops in, I'll give her an opportunity to speak as well. But Marcus, do you want to introduce yourself briefly before we get going?
Yeah, thanks Maya, hi everyone, I'm Marcus Johnson, I'm an associate planner over here at Makers Architecture and Urban Design and been helping staff, Thurston County staff with the housing and kind of development regulations in particular. And I think Onisa has joined, so maybe I hand it off to Onisa to introduce herself.
Hi Onisa, you're muted, we're just doing introductions right now.
Hi, I'm producer Onisa from Burke Consulting, glad to be here. I'm project manager from Burke.
Thanks, and we'll go ahead and get started now on our presentation. So tonight's meeting is on the development regulations, the amendment package that is part of the Thurston two thousand forty-five periodic update. This is our first work session with the Planning Commission on the development regulations specifically. But as Chair Day mentioned, this is work session twenty-four, so we've been at it for a while now. The code amendment package before you tonight has a couple of different topics, and those focused topics include changes to housing, military compatibility, and related to climate changes in the code. So there's one area specifically, we have a question for the Planning Commission that we'd like to focus in on. This is an area we're looking for direction from the Planning Commission on at tonight's meeting, if you feel prepared to give that direction. But for Grand Mound residential districts, we are proposing some increases to minimum and maximum densities, and we'll provide some background as to why we're proposing that, and ask for some direction on how high, how low, we should go with those minimum and maximum densities. Otherwise, what we're looking for is a thumbs up on the draft that's before you tonight. This is a first draft, so there will be changes as we continue to move through the process and work with a lot of external stakeholders on some of these code changes. But the overarching concepts will generally stay the same moving forward. So just an overview of the Thurston County Code before we get going. We have many, many, many titles within the Thurston County Code, and within each of those titles are several chapters. But we're really only focusing in on one title primarily, that's the Rural County Zoning Ordinance. And then we have a couple of edits to the Impact Feast section. So fairly narrow focus on these code changes. All of these other titles still apply, so we have regulations around roads, roads and bridges, around the environment. That's where our State Environmental Policy Act regulations live, around platting and subdivisions, and then many others for our UGAs as well. So we're not touching those sections of code right now. Some of the UGA codes will come to later next year, but generally those regulations will still apply when people come in for permits. So I'm going to kick it over to Onisa to talk about Grand Mound and the housing allocations first. Onisa, you're still muted.
You sound quite muffled.
Can you hear me now?
No, Onisa.
Sounds like you're underwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might want to check which microphone you're assigned and if you have a noise suppression turned on.
I wish you were in everything.
In a minute, so if we could just give this two slides and I will be going to, going to my laptop.
Great.
Just sitting too far back from the mic. Yeah, we think you're just too far, when you leaned forward, you cleared up.
Oh, now, can you hear me now?
Now you're coming in, good.
Okay, okay, perfect, perfect, so thank you. I, I just wanted to, to bring up this, that we had discussed this before, that the regional housing allocation by TRPC, and in that allocation, that the Grand Mound has, so every jurisdiction has, has capacity allocated. And in that land capacity calculation, we show that the, it shows that your Grand Mound UGA has a deficit of two hundred and twenty-three units, which to accommodate zero to eighty percent AMI. So there's that deficit, and the reason I'm bringing it up, because what Maya just mentioned, that the rezon will address the, the deficit. And one of the options that we, we find from Commerce's guideline and from analysis, that low-rise multifamily is a housing type that's potential to support that zero to eighty percent need of the AMI. So if we could go to the next slide. So this is the table that we wanted to, to bring up, this is again, prepared by Department of Commerce. So this shows different housing types that would meet the housing needs for different income groups, so your first column is housing type. The middle column shows the definition of housing types, and then the right column shows the affordability, that, that goes to different income groups. So you, you see that here, low-rise multifamily, that's walk-up apartments and condominiums, those would be the, would fall under the low-income category, and that's also, if you see in the footnote, it's, it's an affordability for low-rise multifamily, that's, that's for, with public subsidies. And then there's moderate density housing types that are townhomes, duplex, triplex, manufactured, quadplex, and manufactured homes, and then there is detached single-family, which is, which serves over a hundred and twenty percent AMI, and the accessory dwelling unit serves fifty to eighty percent. And then, and then group with low-rise multifamily. So what I wanted to point out that about the deficit that Grand Mound has, we did some very preliminary analysis, and our analysis of the land capacity using different zoning, like we did a test of different zoning. And what it shows that the zoning that as is, is not going to be, like your land capacity shows, that it's not going to be able to meet the, the, the density. So we could provide more information once Maya and Marcus goes through the, the zoning discussion. But, but our, our test indicates that some of the higher density zoning would be able to meet the deficit that you currently have.
We've got a question here in the boardroom.
Yeah.
Hello. This conversation is, in response to your asking the question that you're looking for guidance, it's more of a conversation for within the Planning Commission. This topic has come up before, we've talked about it at great length over a year ago on the Grand Mound UGA. We had a lot of debate and division on that topic, and I'm not sure exactly where we stand, but I know that the former Commissioner Wheely had pointed out very clearly that UGAs are under state laws, provide two different purposes. One is for providing services for the purposes of growth of cities. And the second is specifically not for growth, but exclusively to protect the water source. And we believed, at least some of us believed, that the Grand Mound was in that latter category. However, after that heated discussion in this Planning Commission over a year ago, there was, I mean, Commissioner Time Mencer was in the Olympian newspaper on the front page saying, "Grand Mound is for growth, it's there for growth, that's what we want, that's where we want growth to happen in the county, it's what it's there for." I don't agree with that, but that doesn't matter, if that's what the whole county believes, then that's what we ought to do. But we're holding public meetings, we held a public meeting about Grand Mound. We're talking to the public, the public is telling us we have a very different demographic makeup than Rochester, we're totally different. We don't have the same values, we don't have the same ideals, we do not want to be Rochester's urban growth area. They want to be Grand Mound. And we've got a very confusing message, I think, that we're sharing with them. So I would really like the Planning Commission to say what we believe in regards to the UGA. Is it for protecting the water or is it for growing? And for secondarily, this topic of saying, oh, if we zone it for, you know, low, low-rise multifamily, then that's going to give an opportunity for, for low-income housing or middle-income housing, is not a very fair story to tell. It's totally misleading, we know this stuff always ends up at market rate. Unless we do some explicit thing, like either the government buys the land and subsidizes it, or we give heavy tax incentives in order to offer low-income housing, it's not going to be low-income housing. So we're not going to just say that we're going to designate something this on the hope that maybe it will become that. That's my guidance, but I would like the Planning Commission to discuss this and come to some conclusion.
Commissioner Peston just said most of what I wanted to say, so I'm good.
I, I'd like to finish seeing the proposal, I think there are some things in here, other than the middle high-rise that could effectively, well not, it's not going to reach the goal, but some of it is legitimately, I think, particularly with changes to manufactured home density, I think could be beneficial. Yeah, I just, I'd like to finish seeing that.
I agree with that, I have heard that the manufactured homes currently in Grand Mound are the places where low-income housing currently resides.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to it, but I think there's changes till I think allow up to four or five per a single zone lot, and I think that'll probably be where low-income housing happens.
And maybe staff could correct me if I'm wrong, if we do want to have a discussion about that, it probably comes out in the recommendation we'd make about the zoning densities in Grand Mound, right?
I think for framing purposes, the numbers that are being generated here in terms of the growth that may or may not occur are the regional allocations.
Right.
And Grand Mound is the only UGA, fully within the county's jurisdiction, to accommodate any type of affordable housing.
And we do have a responsibility as a county to accommodate it?
Well, to, to plan for it, not jointly.
Not fully within the county.
I'm sorry?
You mean Tumwaters, not fully within the county.
Well, no, it's, those are joint, so something under joint plan versus something that is a UGA that is full county jurisdiction is not going to be annexed into a city at any point. So we'll remain in county jurisdiction for however long. So that deficit under the new housing laws does need to be addressed in one way or another, so just keep that in mind, and this was, this is what the team has put together in terms of one of the proposals to address that deficit. But we, it does need to be addressed.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Yeah, I guess two questions, or, I don't want to reopen what was apparently a very contentious debate last session, but I, I am interested in this, these two very different definitions of what this UGA is for. It would be really beneficial to me, and this can happen outside of here if, if we want to for time, but if we could have a little bit of a review of what the, what we know of the actual intentions of this UGA. Which of these two types it was intended for, which do we see it as, as a best use for? I think are two related, but not necessarily identical questions. I also am a little confused about the difference between saying we have a need for low-income housing, which is true, and then that this is the, this proposal will provide it. I'm interested in what those assurances would be. Those are just two questions to have ready for.
I just want to, I just want to make sure, accommodation, meaning that we're not presenting zoning and land use barriers, is different than ensuring that that's exactly what the outcome will be. I just want to be clear what the state requirements are.
That's also the purview of planning, is to accommodate, not affirmatively, like.
We don't, we don't create, we present the opportunity.
That's usually about the best we can do from here. All right.
I would just like to frame this a little bit and keep it in everybody's mind that this Grand Mound area also is, has more urban infrastructure with water and sewer, traffic, sidewalks, some sidewalks and those kind of things. And also that Grand Mound is not, it's not just county, we also have a tribal partner down there that is growing and is building out. And if we took a hands-off approach to what we're doing in Grand Mound, that's probably not going to work out very well. It's much better to work trying to grow together with the tribe than it is trying to fight off the tribe, because it's going to grow down there one way or the other.
Yeah, I guess that adds another question that I have, which is, which is how, and we may get into that with this presentation, we may, may want to save some time after the presentation, but how the, the tribe integrates into this discussion here. And then, what, again, if we're talking about it being something that we're trying to combat lower income, that infrastructure is really key, I'm interested in what kind of infrastructure actually exists in this area to make it so that it's something that would actually be accessible.
It's pretty, because it's a UGA, it, it has sewer water. So regardless of why the UGA was created, it now is a place that actually has sewer and water that can support more dense development that wouldn't otherwise be allowed out in rural areas on septic systems.
When you say it now is sewer, I thought that we just said that there's counties probably moving forward with a new sewer project there, that's going to cost the local residents a large fortune. Is that, you're saying it already exists, or?
Grand Mound has a wastewater system.
So, but there's still going to be some significant added expense for additional sewer in the near future.
I don't want to speak to any details I'm, I'm not familiar with, with the, any updates to their wastewater plan, but the wastewater system was, was constructed to serve Grand Mound. I'd have to do additional research, if you want to get into any kind of plan updates.
Yeah. A year ago, we were told that there was all sorts of plans to do more sewage there. And that was going to, and it was a decision, and that it was going to cost local residents quite a bit of money. So I'd like to know what that is, what the plans are for that, what the timing and what the expenses.
All right, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
All right, take us away.
Great, well, thank you, I think we're gonna move to, to Marcus now.
All right, thanks Onisa, so just to build off of the conversation that's already started here and the related to both the housing types by income bracket that needs to be accommodated within the new state laws, and then just the Grand Mound UGA deficit, we wanted to kind of provide some pictures and showcase of like what the, what these different housing types look like relate, in relation to the density. So, right now, currently in Grand Mound, the majority, the, the zone, the zoning district that covers majority of the area falls into this kind of first grouping of this three to eight units per acre, which is primarily allowing for single-family home development. This is single-family home development that can happen at a varying different levels of lot sizes. So anywhere from a five thousand square foot lot to a fifteen thousand square foot lot is essentially what this density allows for is equivalent to. Then when you get to the eight to twelve units per acre kind of grouping or category, you're still seeing a lot of single-family development, but you're also allowing for some moderate density to be allowed and included within that, that grouping of density right there. So if you remember back to the table on the last slide, the moderate density includes some middle housing types like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. And so for an example of that over there on the right-hand side is a triplex in Ridgefield, Washington, which is north of, it's in the Vancouver, Washington, kind of metro area, little north of Vancouver. And so that's a triplex on about a ten thousand square foot lot right there. And so that's kind of the equivalent of a twelve units per acre, which you're looking at a twelve units per acre.
Question?
Sorry, was there a question?
Yeah, which of these types are allowed in county zoning currently?
So currently, there's a kind of smaller zone district in the UGA, in the Grand Mound area that is four to sixteen dwelling units per acre, so you would pretty much have that kind of mod, that second bullet point is potentially what you could get up to, now there would be, there's some changes and some details in the zoning code that I don't think necessarily allow a triplex, so you don't currently allow triplexes in your zoning code. So you wouldn't, you know, the density would be allowed for this, but it doesn't necessarily allow for this housing type in particular.
Thank you.
At eighteen units per acre, you have, again, folk, so you would see more moderate density, and then you would also begin to start seeing some low-rise apartments, and I wanted to point to an example in kind of West Olympia, so you see there, that's kind of a garden apartment style development in a West Olympia zoned eighteen units per acre, so you see there are two-story attached buildings with surface parking lots and some kind of green space in between the buildings. Is essentially kind of the type of development you might see at eighteen units per acre, on the low-rise apartment side of things. And then at twenty-four units per acre, you're still, you're, you'll see kind of the three-story garden apartment type, housing type. Again, an example from West Olympia in a zone that is twenty-four units per acre. And so you can see again, it's a three-story building, usually, you know, two units per floor stacked on top of each other with, you know, surface parking and vegetation and open space throughout the development. Is what you're looking at in terms of that type of development there.
Is that a type that's allowable?
Sorry, is this a type that's allowable currently? No, currently no.
Thank you.
Next slide. And so, building off of all of that, getting into some of the, the housing code changes and a particular focus here, so the proposed Grand Mound zoning changes would include increasing the minimum and maximum residential densities for the Grand Mound zoning districts, which there are three. And so when you're looking at this, the first number is the minimum density, and the second number is the maximum density. And so you could see, we'd jump or boost up the current residential three-six unit to five and eight units per acre. For that first zoning district, the second zoning district would have a jump from four to sixteen to eight to twenty-four units per acre. And then also in Grand Mound is an arterial commercial zoning district, which is a mixed-use zone that is primarily focused on commercial uses. There's like a hotel right when you get off the highway interchange there, and I think there's also kind of a water theme park a little south in the urban, in the Grand Mound area as well with a hotel. And so this area also allows residential. And so this area also allows residential uh development in this in this zone as well or mixed-use buildings. And the jump here would be uh. A residential minimum of twelve units per acre and then a maximum of twenty-four acre, twenty-four units per acre. Um so those are the proposed kind of minimum and maximum residential densities, and then. The other proposed idea that we're recommending here is to for particularly the residential eight to twenty-four. Uh zone district to not allow new single-family development in the residential zone, and this is. Mostly to encourage the low-rise multifamily and moderate density in the zone because. This would be the only zoning district uh that the county has full control over that. Can accommodate the 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 housing need or the the housing at the zero to eighty percent A M I income bracket. And so uh wanting to make sure that the housing types that get developed going into the future. Um are housing types that could potentially be at that. Between that zero to eighty percent A M I or that, you know, eighty to a hundred percent A M I, so. That is with the low-rise multifamily and the moderate density type of housing types. Um this is. Kind of an option that we've thrown out there, and this would not impact current single-family development. It wouldn't. People would not have to tear down their homes and build something else or anything of that nature. It's just looking out into the future and thinking about new single-family development. So I'll stop there cuz I know this was kind of a key. Uh topic area that we wanted uh counsel kind of direction on, and I think just. A kind of a question of whether this sounds like it's going in the right direction. How do you think about the no? Single, not allowing new single-family development in the eight to twenty-four area and any questions, I guess.
Hi there. So I have a question. Uh based on what you told us earlier, it sounds like the majority of the zoning is the three-six right now?
Yeah, majority of the U G A area is the three-six right now.
And uh from the your earlier slide, the going from three-six to five-eight isn't going to. What that's most likely going to end up developed at is not going to get sub eighty percent A M I, right?
Correct.
So the majority of the rezone will not accommodate low-income housing if we're just moving three-six to five-eight. It's mostly the the smaller amount of four-sixteen moving to eight-twenty-four. That would be that?
Yes.
I guess I just question why we're increasing density. On that lower point, when the point of this is to accommodate low-income housing, when we understand that that change will not accomplish that.
So sorry, Marcus, in the five to eight, you would still potentially get more A D U's and more. More lots for manufactured homes though, right?
Correct, yeah, that's what that was gonna be my my, what part of my response there was. I think at the five to eight. Especially at that like kind of higher level, you're still introducing the uh ability to get. At least a duplex on uh some of these on these lots. But primarily, you would allow for more A D U development, uh or you would still have a lot of ability for A D U development, which is gonna be on a later slide, which we have some.
Changes there. I I would just, since you're asking for direction, I I appreciate the uh the. Uh prohibition on new single-family home in the medium density, but if the. Largest change to the largest amount of properties, that first one, and there's no real push, like similar to that, to. Do the multiple manufactured homes or to do the A D U's, we should probably be thinking about. How we also encourage that behavior and what is the largest rezone of the the section.
Commissioner Casino?
I I was hoping that you might have, um I I I have a visual in my mind of the map that of the. Of the U G A, but if you have a the current U G A map, and if this. If the new map will also include the gravel pit and the Womoski properties, are those also expected to be the eight to twenty-four? High-density zoning or um I get, I guess. I'd work better if I saw a map of this as well. Is there one of those prepared by chance?
Yeah, I didn't put one in the PowerPoint. That was a faux pas on my part, but I can certainly bring one back to the next presentation. And uh in response to your second question, uh Commissioner Casino, the Wilmowski would be shifting. Right now, their request is four to sixteen per one, and yes, they would be um. Included in the eight to twenty-four per one. Black Lake Quarry requests the gravel mine is shifting to light industrial. So it would not be affected by these changes.
Were those the only two U G A expansions that still had a possibility of moving forward?
At this time, yes, those are the two proceeding this year.
For Grand Mound.
For Grandma.
Yes.
Alright, and maybe you could uh share with us kind of what what your vision is for the kind of the the shape and the. Uh type of guidance and feedback you're looking for for this?
Yeah, um so I mean, Marcus, I'll let you chime in here, but is bumping the minimum densities and. You know, are eight and twenty-four high enough, too high, not high enough? Do we wanna go higher than that? Um that that's the kind of feedback we're looking for here. Marcus, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's, yeah, I think it's both on that that first on all these zones. I think the residential five to eight. Whether you think that should potentially go a little higher as well. To maybe reach some of the the more moderate density uh housing types uh potentially, and then also uh similarly. Whether the eight to twenty-four um is high enough or too high or uh not high enough, and then I think. I think that second bullet point about, you know, how. The approach to the non-allowing new single-family and kind of really focusing on the low-rise and the moderate density, kind of the zero to eighty percent income. A M I accommodation area. Whether that that seems to make sense um as a as an approach going forward.
Well, yeah, Marcus, if I can um chime in as well, just to uh to keep keep the perspective that um. We without increasing the density, we won't be able to meet the deficit, number one. And we did some uh test run with different densities and. Uh we find that the um the four to sixteen um density. That if it goes up to twenty-four, that should be able to meet the deficit. If the the other six, three to six, if it goes to five to eight and eight being the max. Then it would be able to uh meet the density, but if the five to eight even goes up higher. Like five to twelve, we have done a test with that too. That's even better. So I'm just putting some perspective. We don't have. Exact accurate numbers, but we did some tests on that.
Okay, Commissioner Casino, got it. Thank you.
So the way that I understand this then is that within the U G A then in residential. Districts, there would be no more densities under five per acre. So we'd lose all of our three per acre, so if they were not serviced by sewer, cuz I think there are still areas within. The U G A that are not serviced by the sewer yet. If you put a minimum density of five per acre on them, they'll never be able to develop because you can't septic five per acre. You can only septic three per acre. How do we get around that issue?
Connect to the sewer?
What's that?
Connect to the sewer.
Connect to the sewer is a great one, but connected to the sewer might not.
I think what has happened historically is that those properties, I know this has come up a lot in Lacey. Um those properties develop at three per acre, and because they have been developed at three per acre, then you lose the opportunity to develop them. You know, higher density.
So. Yeah, I guess my my concern is if if you have to connect to the sewer at a maximum density of eight per acre, that's not a very good incentive. To drag sewer line down cuz it's expensive. And if you build them out at three per acre, getting infill later is very difficult to do, and that would still require either of larger tanks. Or dragging a sewer line down, and I've re, like the rest of the, I like all these numbers. I'm just concerned that if we. Without it being fully sewed, that there will be pockets that do not get developed because they're not sewed, and we have a minimum density that's higher than can be sustained. By septic.
And in that case, we would probably be looking at places where it's not. Like the financial incentives are to not build it because it just, the cost to sewer overwhelms the.
Does, yeah.
Mr. Butler? Real quick, I I I felt it was implied that to reach our goals, um. The five to eight basically has to all lean pretty hard towards the eight. Is is that what I heard?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's it's providing a range there. Ideally, we would ideally, you would hope to get the leaning towards the eight. But I mean, all of these are really looking at, the eight is. If you go towards the eight, the the eight there covers, again, as I mentioned before, allowing for some moderate density. Um on on certain sized lots, and I think the range there is both. Uh to increase the density a little bit, but also understand kind of the current development pattern. Uh over the last, you know, over the last ten years type of thing, so that's that's part of the range there, but um. It can go, it can go higher, as Anessa said, and could potentially be uh. Uh make, reach, accommodating the goal, some of those goals easier.
Uh we we did a test with um twelve unit and that shows um. A good capacity, but if we kept five to eight, then we have um a five to eight and then eight to twenty-four. Then we come at about two hundred, so still we are a little shy of two twenty-three, just so, just to point that out.
And is the, what assumptions are you making about the densities when you run those numbers?
So these are very preliminary numbers, so we are just um using the the existing, um so U G A are three to six. Uh six, we are making assumption of that, like at eight eight dwelling units per acre. And then for four to sixteen, we are making an assumption of twenty-four dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
Maximum max and everything.
So that's pretty optimistic.
Yeah, and we we are still shy of two twenty-three.
And if I could follow up my my initial question, um. It, would it be, i- if we did five to twelve, would it be more economical for development to. Make the expenditure to expand sewer to those locations?
Well, yeah.
Okay, then I I guess I lean towards the that that lower level of zoning should go higher. Cuz otherwise, get the the, I I heard the the other speaker say that, well, this gets us some more density, but this. Code change is not just for density, this is explicitly for that sub eighty percent and, you know, triplexes don't get us that. That's, this is my thought process.
Commissioner Casino?
When we're looking at the uh higher-density areas specifically, but it might, it might be a more general to all of these. Are we making any changes to parking requirements?
So there is, there is a, there's a slide later on in the presentation, but yes, there's some changes to parking requirements that I would be looking at. Uh for middle housing types, kind of uh a focus around for a minimum parking standard of one parking spot per unit. For the middle housing types, and then for the multifamily, so anything five plus units or more uh would be at one and a half. Uh parking spots per unit.
Do we? I I guess my concern is if we're gonna try to put apartments in there with twenty-four or maybe even consider more units per acre. Uh the amount of waste is, well. Let me get on a soapbox here. No, I I cannot stand how much space we waste on cars, and if it was up to me, I would get rid of. All parking requirements and let the market sort it out, but as it is, requiring one and a half. Parking spaces per unit anywhere, I think is. Is already plenty, so our one first unit is already plenty, one requiring one and a half, I think is overkill, and if we start. Running up against density problems because we're wasting space on parking units, I think that would be a shame.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Yeah, so second that if we're actually aiming for these areas to be uh. Uh affordable housing, um one of the better ways of incentivizing that is decreasing parking overall and and pushing.
Or bedrooms, less parking spots.
Exactly. So anything that we can do that would. That would, that would minimize the amount of required parking would be ideal to me. I have a different, an unrelated comment, and I'm hold, I'm just holding up space for when we're done with this.
Mr. President?
Questions for Ashley, I think that. You mentioned that the differences with, or you're nodding your head to my comments about the differences. Between Rochester and Grand Mound, I just looked up the populations. Population of Rochester is over six thousand, the population of Grand Mound, I thought was only fifteen hundred, it's actually thirty-three hundred. I know there's sewer in Grand Mound, I know it's a U G A. Despite that, do we have zero, say, over density or zoning in Rochester or some, and would it make any sense here?
That's a a really good point, and I think that the team can respond. We did actually explore a number of changes for Rochester. Particularly in the lammert area, um but the septic requirements make it very difficult, so I think we're airing more on the side of. Placeholder policies cuz um in working with environmental health, we are gonna be looking at alternative wastewater treatment. Solutions for Rochester, but those are five to ten years down the road. But in the meantime, I don't think there are a lot of changes. Uh I don't know if Marcus in Maya, you can confirm whether there are any real density changes that can be made. In Rochester.
No, yeah, actually, I think that's, we, I mean, my understanding, Maya, you wanna jump in is. We have the the septic, or sorry, the, yeah, kind of the. Uh rural septic tank kind of uh regulations and environmental health regulations really make it difficult to increase the density. Cuz you need a lot of space and land for those uh to make sure the water stays healthy.
Yep, that's exactly right. Uh we did, we did initially have a proposal that bumped the lammerts. And it's just not feasible with the current regulations from environmental health, and that's limited by state law. So it's really, our hands are tied there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casino?
I guess to get back to our decision point, I really like these densities that you're talking about here. Commissioner Bumgarder's idea that maybe the upper end of that lower one being eight units per acre, if that was bumped up a little bit, that wouldn't hurt my feelings either. But I like seeing these higher densities in the U G A. Um especially if we have the capacity, the infrastructure capacity to take them on, which it looks like for a lot of this, we would. Um or at least incentivize for the rest of it to get filled out, so. If that's a decision point that you guys are hoping for, I would certainly support these densities or slightly more. And when we do a hearing, maps, lots of maps, we can.
Would it um? Would it be possible, or just crazy talk, to uh to think about maybe breaking it into. Three residential zones? Keeping the, maybe keeping like a five to eight, and then something in the, you know, eight to probably sixteen range. And then uh basically be a little bit more deliberate about where we not seeing a map in front of us, where those four to sixteens would be.
With sewer in mind?
Alright, eight to twenty-fourths.
There isn't much four to sixteen.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's, that was my point earlier that we're leaning really heavy on a really tiny part, and that's really the only part that gives us. The extra housing that's in there, and the only way that lowest one even hits the low income is if it's at the absolute max of it, which is unlikely to actually develop. At the absolute max because there's not enough economic incentive to.
Down here.
Do it that way.
I I guess to kind of go with Commissioner Day here, my concern is that if. If you have a residential zoning that maxes out at sixteen units per acre and you don't get higher than that until you get into the arterial commercial. You're gonna miss out on Womoski. And the Womoski property, I don't know what they're gonna do with it, but them building an apartment complex there and adding a boatload of homes to Grand Mound. Seems like a really good idea for that area.
Yeah. What is your idea, Commissioner Day? Um would be to split it out um into three residential zones.
Middle step between those two.
And the the new one is in between those two or below or where?
Um I think it would be in between the two, probably.
Something like eight to sixteen or something?
Yeah, something like eight to sixteen.
Yeah, hear hearing the comments that have been made, something that we could look at, um I can see if Public Works has an existing map of where. Sewer lines are currently. Um and maybe we could use that to determine areas that might be more appropriate for that lower five to eight or maybe even lower than that. Five to eight or maybe even lower than that, if there's sewer lines that are not in a reasonable connection distance. Um, keeping it at three to six and then having a middle zone that's bumped up to what you all are discussing, like a four to sixteen range. Uh, but but that would take some time, we probably would not be able to bring that kind of information back to the next meeting, which is okay, I just. Just wanna let you know if that's the direction of the planning commission, that's something we could certainly look into.
So, oh, I was just gonna say the one, the one thing we do, so you know, we make all these plans and hope that good things happen. The one thing that we do have the ability to do is try and align incentives to see, to make sure that we get what we want. And the sewer is probably the most important. Tool for Grand Mound.
Yeah, and similar to that, I don't know if Public Works has this, but I wanna think that they had a category that they mapped out that was called hard to sewer.
Yes, they.
And and if the map that we could see shows these hard to sewer parts. Parcels, that would be really useful, cause then we know that those are going to be. Well, they're not gonna be high density, no matter what, because nobody's ever gonna drag a line through there, they can't drag a line, they're not gonna get E one grinder pumps in there or whatever it takes to actually connect, so. Uh, knowing where sewer probably won't be anytime soon would be very useful to us.
Maybe put some of the super high density past the hard to sewer.
Like those ideas, um, I'm curious when you talk about the. The line of lining of incentives, which I also fully support. One of the incentives that most developers want when talking about building low income is density bonuses. So how would that apply here? Uh, would it be possible? In an eight to twenty four to have density bonuses for low income housing that pushes it up above thirty two or something? What, I don't wanna. Take away one of our arrows, so to speak, for encouraging, what?
I thought that was illegal to offer density bonuses for low income housing.
Uh, everybody in the States doing it, so it must not be.
You can, I mean, we can look at that as well as tie-ins with T D R.
You could maybe do a T D R system.
That would be great.
Uh, I I just wanted to echo, I I really like your idea of a middle step. Cause I was just looking at the maps and the four to sixteen is two really tiny pockets that do all of the heavy lifting there. And there's a lot of property very close to it, that if it was a middle step between the two. Would make sense and it would also probably already have ready access to the sewer. And I'd rather build density where there's already kind of density.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Yeah, I guess one of my concerns uh is actually more on the arterial commercial right there. Um, so we uh. If I'm looking at the maps correctly, there are areas of relatively open land uh. On either side of I five leading up to this choke point. Um, and then it starts to get increasingly developed going north and south of there. Um, it looks to me like that bottom spot right under Great Wolf Lodge is essentially the only like. Uh, Ross I five corridor available. For anything that we might wanna be doing in terms of like future habitat connectivity or 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 uh. Or conservation, and I'm a little concerned about increasing development just on that lower part right there. Increasing zoning development on it when it's the only spot that is uh. That is relatively available until you get uh much farther north.
This is the area just south of the Great Wolf Lodge?
Yes, yes.
I believe that area is already owned by the tribe.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be our call anyway, really.
I'm talking about here, cause that's, yeah, okay. Um, that was my, the the only like kind of separate from this conversation uh that I, or point conversational point I wanted to bring up. I do agree with the idea of breaking up the residential um.
Three steps.
Yeah.
What do you feel about the three steps? I I I think I'd have to see a map before I'd see the value of three steps um. Or three different levels of density, I my gut says it's probably. Near moot, you know, that it's probably not gonna make any big change. So, uh, I mean, if if there's a reason for it when we see a map, I'm not against it, but I do like the idea of at least having. One residential zone that is up to twenty four units per acre, cause I do wanna see some apartments built down there and. And maybe these five through eight parcels, if there could be a middle step that would support. Some sort of manufactured home that could be sewered or manufactured home park that could be sewed, that wouldn't be terrible.
There's a, there's a change to allow up to five on a five per acre that way.
Yeah.
Uh, I, it would, would it change uh if instead of three steps, that first step was five to twelve? Would that effectively, cause you only build twelve where you could do it?
I think five to twelve would solve that problem.
And you don't need three steps then.
Yeah.
That that's true. Simple's better. I would support a moving it from five to eight to five to twelve.
We're not, we're not voting, but we wanna like just temperature check. I'm not saying any thumbs down on that, so there's some guidance for you guys.
That's great feedback, thank you so much. Were you ready to move on, Marcus?
I'm ready, yeah. So staying in the Grimbound uh area, there's some uh allowance for some E D U changes, accessory dwelling unit changes. These are to ensure complacency with uh H B thirteen thirty seven, which was passed in twenty twenty three. State law which allows uh or requires U G A areas to allow two A D Us on any residential lot. Um, so that would be one change, it makes ensures that the maximum size of any A D U cannot be below one thousand square feet. So at minimum, uh, the maximum size of an A D U has to be, has to allow a thousand square feet. And then no, and then it regulates and says that you can't have a no uh owner occupancy requirement, so there. Be no owner occupancy requirements with the changes for the A D Us that are within the ground mound area. And I see a hand up from.
Maximum size of one thousand square feet?
Yeah, you you stated that it can't be any smaller than one thousand square feet.
Sorry, the maximum size cannot be set any smaller than one thousand square feet. So you can set like, so the maximum size of an A D U can be set higher. So you can set the maximum size at twelve hundred square feet if you decide you like twelve hundred better. But you just, the state law says you can't set it any lower than one thousand for the maximum size. And then an A D U can be built to whatever size that the owner wants to, it doesn't have to build it to a certain size, if that makes sense.
Uh, so if I'm understanding correctly, you can build an A D U. Smaller than a thousand, but the county can't say set a maximum size that is lower than a thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
I Commissioner Fishburne, you've got a hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, it sounds like a minimum maximum to me, but um what, what uh? What? Uh, restrictions are there in this around septic sewer for these A D Us?
Yeah, so. Sorry.
But just are there any restrictions around septic and sewer for the for the A D U that you just have the three bullets here? I'm assuming that's not an exhaustive list.
Right, so these would be, I mean, these are within their. So the this list here and the A D Us here, I mean, they would have to be connected up to a sewer system. And the understanding is that these are within a U G A area that is has a sewer system. And therefore can handle um A D U connections um is essentially where the the law comes from.
Okay, and what about, uh, do we have any concerns about parking? You know, additional parking requirements because of A D Us in those areas?
So currently, and this change here, the proposed change for the Grand Mound A D U changes would just. Keep what is in the current standards, which is if you build an A D U. Um, it's in a sit, like you would have to have a minimum, at least one parking spot for that A D U is what's in the current code. We haven't changed, we haven't proposed changing that to that at at this phase. Um, I'd heard earlier comments about potentially reducing parking and that can be a decision that. Um. Plan Commission works through, but yeah, right now, the proposal wouldn't change any of the parking standards that are required for A D Us.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Casino?
When we talk about maximum size of A D Us, I think the county already has some standards for maximum size of A D Us for elsewhere. And the maximum sizes, there isn't one. If I remember correctly. Um, I would suggest that we don't have a maximum size and we just have it the same all the way across the county. And not have a special size limitation just for Grand Mound.
I think there in a future slide, there are incentives that they've developed to oversize thresholds for relinquishing certain rights to property.
There, it's the difference between rural and urban, so in rural areas, there are. Different provisions for A D Us and different case law that applies. So although that is a great thought.
So we have to put a maximum size on it?
Rural.
But this.
But but not Grand Mound, but you, sorry, that you you were talking about one, one size that would. Apply everywhere in the county, that would be lovely, our current planners would.
So right now we have a maximum size in our other U G As for A D Us?
I don't know the answer to that question, Maya or Marcus, do you know? If there's any any A D U max sizes?
I believe that some of the U G As do have a maximum size, I don't know off the top of my head, but all of those. Um, sections of code will be changing and we'll probably have drafts mid next year, so I expect that. Specifically, the A D Us for the U G As will have changes going forward as well.
I guess, so my preference would first be that all U G A A D Us have the same maximum. And secondarily, that that maximum is set to uh not having one. But if we are gonna have a maximum, I think all the U G A should have the same maximum.
No, I think this is, this is a little different than what we did before with when we're talking about rural. Because remember rural, you have to have the development capacity.
Unacceptable.
With that, not to have, you can't, I don't think you could put a. A D U on a lot less than five acres, right?
We're we're pro- we're proposing changes to that.
Okay, yeah. Still, but and this is allowing, you know, if I've got one house on one acre. This is still allowing me to put two A D Us on that.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a little bit different than what we did in the rural area.
But that that two P A D Us per residential lot law is going to affect all of our. U G As, not just Grand Mound U G A, right?
No, this is title twenty.
Well, that's not gonna happen everywhere else too.
The joint codes will be coming to the planning commission separately, we're waiting to. We're waiting to see what the cities do in updating their housing, so twenty one, twenty two and twenty three. Those titles.
I thought it was state mandated that we were going to have to, but.
They will, but we're just, we're waiting for the cities to. Prepare their housing updates, cause it's probably gonna go beyond that, it won't just be A D U updates, of course, they've got a lot of other ones.
That'll keep us probably from having consistency across all of the U G As.
Yeah.
Right?
I was able to do a quick search and um Olympia and Lacey have an eight hundred and fifty square foot cap, Tom Water has a fifteen hundred square foot cap. Uh, which sounds like they will be making changes to be compliant with the new state law at the minimum, so.
Those sound maybe are very precious.
But go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, do do we know what's driving that minimum maximum size? I mean, if I if I sit down and do the math. If I take a thousand square feet and say divided by, I don't know, I'll just use a random number that is commonly used in building sixteen feet. That gives me a sixty two and a half foot long building, where that's essentially a mobile home, sixteen by sixty two. Is that, is that what's driving this, that we wanna see mobile homes as A D Us?
I wouldn't say that's necessarily what's driving this, I think this is a state law that is kind of trying to cover bases on a lot of different. Contexts, and so it might play out in different ways. Um, I think there's already. The law also has kind of like limitations in term or allowances for. Uh, basically that A D Us have to be allowed to be at least two stories um type of thing, but you already have that in your code, so that's why this not on this bullet point list. You already allow um A D Us to be um. You know, so a a additional story, so. Um, so it might not be, it might not necessarily be a sixteen by sixty two. You know, if it's a two story building and so one one thousand square feet and it's five hundred per floor, then it's, you know, a shorter building that um. Or not as long as a building potentially.
Uh, if I could add to that, that um in the past, like Maya mentioned, that other zoning codes. Uh, older zoning codes had like eight hundred square feet or eight fifty square feet A D Us, those are pretty small. And the intent of this A D Us to make it um more useful, so. Having that increased square footage would would make it more usable residential unit.
Give my ignorance on this, but why are we, wh- wh- what is the incentive for a square footage of? Full space versus a square footage of footprint? Um, like. I I'm a little confused as to what the square footage for the A D Us is for in this context.
Does it refer to the?
Yeah, does it refer to the footprint of the the structure, or does it refer to the habitability of like the amount of the amount of like living space?
Lot coverage is usually the standard that is used in zoning codes to try to get it footprints. Um, but in this case, it's looking space.
Interesting, okay.
I'd still prefer to have no ma- maximum set until we.
Yeah.
Maybe come out county with a countywide decision on A D Us.
Uh, that's a con- well, if we did have to give guidance now, it sounds like the largest that we have is Tom Water at fifteen hundred. So if we had to. Give an upper limit with the goal of trying to keep these consistent, fifteen hundred kind of makes sense. Cause I I'm assuming the other two U G As that intentionally kept them small. Aren't going to want to go very high. But if we can make the case that if fifteen hundreds with Tom Waters doing, the U G A we just did in Grand Mound is fifteen hundred. Maybe we make progress that way.
I guess.
It is a big A D U, but if it's tall, not long.
Yeah, there's that, I guess I also just like, I do, I wanna echo Commissioner Fishburne's question about what the pressures are here. Like, why, why is it important to have a smaller A D U? Because if there's a good reason for it, I don't want to step in the way of that.
I think that's cities trying to. Allow A D Us without getting a lot of A D Us.
They don't want McMansions coming up.
That's, that would, that's my question essentially.
There's also an affordability question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're an aesthetics thing too, if you can drop a mobile home because of the size restrict, the size is more permissive. That might not be visually as appealing as some of the cities would want in their areas.
Small A D Us, that's like a small A D U, that's a one bedroom rents for a lot cheaper than.
That's true.
Twelve hundred square foot A D Us.
So it sounds like there's actually good arguments for having a smaller one.
Well, and bad ones. It cuts both ways, it sounds like.
One of the other things that was talked about prior is that. And I don't know how we act, I don't remember how we actually ended up with this, is that if there's a already a home existing and then somebody builds. Another building. Which one is actually the A D U now? Does the second one always have to be the A D U, or if somebody is on a residential lot and they have. A sixteen by sixty two single wide mobile home on there. And they build a thirty two hundred square foot.
Access five.
Five and four, that A D U or is now the mobile home, the A D U, and is that allowed? So there used to be. I know that some jurisdictions, you can't have an A D U that's bigger than the primary home, I don't think we have that here, I think that we can redesignate. As building occurs, but I don't remember that for sure.
I think that that is a case, we have a lot of um, a lot of properties that have older, smaller homes on them and.
They become the A D U.
Um, I don't know the numbers are exact, but I I do also recall Brett saying that there's flexibility. Cause we don't have a max size. The rural area.
I actually like that flexibility. It keeps building costs reasonable, what they're doing.
Yeah, cause otherwise you're having to tear down, I mean, I think the argument is.
Yeah.
You tear down a structure that might still be livable in a smaller, build a big structure and then you can go and build an A D U, I mean, that.
You don't see a lot of A D Us even when they're allowed, because they're very expensive to build, right? That's that's my basic understanding and. The flexibility makes it cheaper to do that. Maybe, I don't know.
I think there's more of them out there than you would think.
Yes, the flexibility helps with different scenarios and the state as with some of these housing changes is is. Taking a lot of steps to try to make uh even A D Us cheaper to um. Um, to develop as well, which relates to another slide that's in this packet as well around um. Kind of impact fee schedule and impact fee stuff where A D Us can't be. Um, have an impact fee that's uh. More than fifty percent of what you would charge for a single family home, it, for example.
I think that's a good point about that when we get to that one. I think that's a good point about that when we get to that one.
Yeah, that'll that'll be fun. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I just wanted to double check with folks about how they felt about the two ADUs on the new residential lot before we moved on to the next slide. Right.
To think about.
We could go higher than that.
Okay.
Do we, do we want that to be a higher number?
Have your own little complex.
The density there, does it really make sense to restrict the number of ADUs? It's not a terrible argument to make because the distinguishing gets a little. You're gonna have, you're gonna have neighbors coming in here that do not like that their other neighbor brought in fifteen RVs and parked them on. These are ADUs.
I love public participation.
But that that's what will happen there if we have too many. Allowed too many. I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just saying that's what I think would happen.
Yeah. Um, I guess to to just to put a thing on that, like I, at least for myself as a as a planning commissioner, I. Support increasing that number.
I'd give you a thumbs up on that.
Yeah, mostly so that I can have my like queer compound up.
I I would love to hear any feedback on that before I take a firm stance. As a former Z dormer. Gonna have a commune of like semi-permanent yurts out in rural county. I don't think it hurts to have that, at least as a topic that can go to a public hearing.
Yeah, for sure. Like, that's what I mean, basically, is I wanna hear, I wanna hear from the people who are actually impacted by it.
I would say any residential lot, maybe not, but there could be.
Maybe special use permits for more than two?
Or zones where you could have more than two.
Sounds like there's a lot of rich discussion to have on that as we go on.
I mean, that sounds like a little cottage housing development at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Public hearing because I think the folks in UGA are gonna be in for a real surprise compared to what we told them last time around.
That's true.
Ashley, did you just say that sounds like a pot of chowder?
Cottage.
Cottage housing.
I mean, it kinda sounds like both.
Pot of chowder sounds awesome.
It is soup season.
Alright, I can continue. Uh, rural, so these are the rural ADU changes, uh proposed ADU changes here and just some background. Um, currently under the the current code, um in rural zones, you are allowed to do an attached. Well, you're allowed one ADU per residential uh unit or for a lot, on a lot, a residential lot. And uh, right now, an attached ADU or a converted ADU. So something that used to be another building that was converted into an ADU is allowed. Um, and does not count towards the underlying density currently in the rural uh zones, but uh if you wanted to do a detached ADU. Um, you wouldn't need to have more land as it counts as a unit towards rural density. So this proposal here is to just. Kind of equalize uh the opportunity and options when you for ADUs. Um, while also trying to maintain the rural character. And so uh, the idea here is to allow attached. Or detached accessory dwelling units as an option for your one ADU, um as long as the size limit. Cannot, you know, size limit maximum eight hundred square feet for the DADU. Um, with an exception that you could potentially go to twelve hundred square feet. Um, with the purchase of a transferable development, right? Um, within that area. So that's the proposal for the rural ADU changes. Is this a minimum maximum like on the last slide? It is another minimum maximum.
So this is for outside of the UGA?
Outside.
I I guess my big concerns is I've never liked the differentiation between conversion, attached and unattached ADUs. I think they should all be treated the same. Um, I don't quite. I've I've heard the arguments of why they shouldn't be treated the same and I I'm not compelled by them.
I think I I tend to agree. Um, what's the, what's the argument for the, cause if we've got uh with the TDR. What's the argument for that, for lowering that cap for that six hundred square feet? Why do we want it set at six hundred square feet?
Why, why eight hundred originally for the, for the daddy, you mean? So it's it's mostly just a way of trying to make the argument because currently. Um, in my, I don't know if you wanna give any background on this, but currently just the uh. The current standards and I think from previous uh. Case law is concerning around uh a detached dwelling unit or detached dwelling unit. Needing to meet the underlying density. And so if you keep the, the argument here is if you keep the detached dwelling unit. Somewhat small, on the smaller side, it can. Be an option for those that want to do a detached ADU without. Coming up into constraints with the underlying density of that area, essentially. So you can treat it more favorably or more closely to what you would do for an attached ADU.
Thanks, Commissioner Casino.
I guess to back up where I was with before on this is that, so this is rural area. These are all going to be limited by septic systems. And so when we start putting limits on them by square feet instead of letting the limits of the septic system. Determine how big these things could be. I think we're kind of going backwards. I don't wanna see, all of a sudden see eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square foot. One bedroom ADUs with four dens and a closet with a window kind of thing, so. Um, I I think that this is probably the wrong way to look at rural ADUs. And that we should uh rely more on what the septic systems can bear. And. I understand the argument about rural character and keeping things rural, but. These are all five acre lots and bigger, so if there's. Two places on there that's four hundred feet off the freeway or off the road instead of three or one, I I I. I'm having a hard time thinking that it's gonna be, because they're gonna be close anyways, because nobody's gonna run. Well, they're not gonna put a second septic system on the five acre parcel, because I don't think they're even allowed to, but even if they could, they're probably not gonna do it, because that's not cost effective. And secondly, they're gonna keep them close together anyways, because they're not gonna wanna run a ton of feet, uh pipe from one ADU to the existing septic system, so. I think that the septic system limitations are probably the best way to regulate. ADUs in the rural area. The rural code only allows one ADU, yeah? Detached, one detached?
None, no.
So current code doesn't allow any ADUs? No detached ADU?
One or one attached. Detach is allowed as long as you have an additional. Like five acres if you're in our 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 one five zone.
You have to treat it like a.
You have to treat it like another home, like another primary residence.
Another five acres, you'd probably just put another house on it.
Yeah, there's no incentive to build a.
Um, so the density, density doesn't change, but in the past, there have been concerns about the rural. Character piece of actually seeing a separate building versus having it be an attached. ADU, but what we've heard from a lot of the builders is that this is one of the highest demand requests they get in a rural area. Detached ADUs, and when I ask them like, who is, where's the demand coming from? It's people wanting to provide space for aging parents.
So yeah, you're not running out, you're not running out of ADU on a five acre lot in rural county, I'm assuming.
Um, so there's a demand there. Um, our codes don't allow it. We only allow attach or this conversion of an existing building.
Just make sure people paint them red and it won't violate the rural.
Or white.
It'll look like a barn.
Um, I do wanna just bring up the point about why these, why people tend to want to be building these does kind of get in the way of this providing. Uh, uh additional housing for uh. The already predicted growth that we have. Um, because this is largely, as you said, people kind of bringing in family. So that's a growth in addition to the growth that we're we're planning for. So the capacity for this to absorb. Uh, our our growth needs is limited by that. That sort of limited reality of why people build.
My guess is there would be more feedback or a lot more interplay in there. Cause it might be that you're not sending grandma to Panorama, you're gonna put grandma in the backyard, uh but she was moving down anyway. But.
Same with college kids coming back with no jobs.
They need to live somewhere, so.
Groups of low income people are seniors.
Yeah, I guess I just wanna say like, it just doesn't, I don't wanna treat it as a one-to-one relation. Like, uh, solution. Because it has its own complications.
They do call them mother-in-law units. Anything else on this from us?
So, did I hear no, no size limitations? Will that work given case law and? The other research that's been done?
I think stripping the size limitations will be challenging with the case law that exists. Um, while there are septic requirements that. Folks will have to meet, it limits based on bedroom, not necessarily based on square footage, so. Uh, you could still run into, I mean, I guess you could run into circumstances where you get a very large house that has one or two bedrooms. And hooks up to an existing septic. And uh, the argument is to limit the impact on rural character. So unless we see something changing under the state legislature that allows these outright without needing to meet the underlying density and. Um, less concerns around that, the existing case law is pretty strict on. How many we can allow in the rural area without affecting rural character and creating a need for services.
So, follow up, if we set the maximum at fifteen hundred, just like Tom Water. Would that violate the rural character rules? Tom Waters' UGA is fifteen hundred, you said?
We could, I mean, the number, you you can set the number at whatever you want. It's just. As it grows, you know, our average home size in the rural county is about two thousand square feet. Um, we've done that analysis, so as you're increasing that, it it becomes closer to. Allowing a standard sized single family home as opposed to what would typically be. Uh, accessory in nature to that principal structure.
To that point, if the average is two thousand, every ADU built under that lowers that average, right?
That is of principal structures, not accessory structures.
Fisher Casino? Um, maybe you can explain to us the connection between ADUs and their square footage and. Development rights. I don't, I don't see a straight line there why you would get a maximum size. Bonus for selling development rights?
It it's been really hard to create a market for transfer development rights, and if I recall correctly, this is something like King County.
So this is a way to push forward TDRs, not necessarily to. Okay, I I guess that's, I think that's the wrong reason.
Well, which, which, which does tie into rural character, because you can essentially say that there's, there's a balance here, right? There's a a transaction happening where the allowance of this larger detached access. Detached accessory dwelling unit is going to help preserve.
The rich people that don't care about rural character can buy their way up.
That's another, another way to look at it. And it's not a, it was throwing an idea out there, because we're also looking at updating our working lands. All our land conservation programs, and it is really, really hard to create a market.
Don't, don't get me wrong, I'm, uh, you know, the whole TDR thing I really like, it's just, I don't. I don't see where it fits in here.
You could use it as an art, as a rural character argument. Because it sounds like the argument is if you allow too many, too big ADUs, you've essentially just, you know, changed the zoning. And if you use TDRs in this circumstance, like there's at least an argument that there is like. Some, some throttle on it.
Yeah.
I don't just, I I like, I like the TDR idea. I like, I like using it in here. Um. I guess I'm more interested in total square, like the the footprint than I am in the livable square feet in that. In terms of like, when we're talking about what this is building, what this is, what this is occupying.
I would also.
Make more sense.
I would be much more interested in the footprint than the square footage as well.
Just to clarify for the record, I'm fact checking myself and a Tom Water UGA is also eight hundred square feet. I'm not sure I was using uh AI to get me the first numbers, but it's eight hundred, eight hundred and eight fifty for the three county UGAs on a. Size cap for accessory dwelling units in our current code as it's written today.
Comes out in the wash. Extra points for innovation. Okay.
I think for the TDR thing, I don't know how you're going to. Come up with enough money to add four hundred square feet. Somebody to sell you the right to develop an entire parcel of five acres. And as somebody who has owned transferable development rights since they began in Thurston County. I think this is a bad way to try and convince people that we're trying to. Get these, this TDR program moving. I mean, to me, the only way to get the TDR program moving is for the county commissioners to somehow figure out. How to make the cities use them. Or for us to use them in the UGAs. Where we give people the ability, act, an actual ability to de- to develop more units.
Yeah, the problem with TDRs is of course you have to set an artificial cap on something that the market would otherwise do. And that is essentially something we're trying to avoid with. How increasing housing availability. Just the primary conundrum.
Doesn't this get to exactly that square feet, square foot or the the footprint issue? Is there a way we can sh- shift this conversation to to the footprint rather than livable square footage to get there?
Well, this is actually taking me back to, I think this is the right way to use TDRs. Uh, because you're not limiting units, like if we had a thousand square foot maximum. And then wanted to have the ability to go up to twelve hundred square feet if you bought TDRs. Like that doesn't, that's unlikely to change the, like, the per unit occupancy of those. Difference between a thousand and twelve hundred square feet, it's two to three bedrooms tops, probably less with the septic requirements.
Septic's always gonna be the big limiter.
So I think. This might make more sense than anywhere else I've seen TDRs use.
That's kind of sad, right?
Like you don't wanna put an artificial like height cap in Olympia, so that, just so that you can buy TDRs.
Are you saying that it's okay to leave it in here, but like Commissioner Nelson was saying, nobody's gonna participate because it's ridiculous?
Well.
I think you do have quite a few people out in rural areas that really just want those extra square feet. I I don't know, we, we will see.
We won't know until we do a public hearing, I don't think.
I think this would be an interesting way to try it. See if it works.
I don't think it hurts. Well, it it hurts if you just want, if you don't want some kind of arbitrary eight hundred square feet, but I think we're gonna be stuck with that. Regardless, because of case law, so if this is something that we can put in as a trial.
Great, so the case law, uh Commissioner Hanson, you've got.
King County has it.
I, that was, this is my question, if if King County has done it, what's the experience been? What's the outcome?
That is a great question. That we can ask King County.
Any other questions on this?
Just to, I'm also gonna just note that we are running behind. So apologies to our east coasters. Yeah, I think we're good to move on. We could move on.
Okay. Um. This is a proposed, what we're calling proposed conservation subdivision change. So this is uh an ability. Um, under the current standards, you have an ability to kind of do a grouping of homes uh. On a very large, you know, uh. On a very large lot, um in terms to to kind of save contiguous open space or uh. Resource use area, and so you kind of put all the homes in one area and do a kind of a subdivision there. And so this would build on top of that and provide um a density bonus. Based off of uh two options. Uh, applying within the rural residential resource area for land in the. For land in the zoning dis- uh, sorry, the options would be one that's based off of land conservation and one that would be based off of housing size. Right now, we proposed it as a way the develop, these are two options and the developer would choose one, or. The developer only gets the bonus for one, they don't get up, they can't like stack the bonuses. Um. Type of situation. Um, if there's one option that you just don't really like, and you wanna keep the other option that's also available. Um, as you kind of dig into this, this is a quick overview, uh, for an example, so on the option one, which is uh, the land conservation one, if you had a ten acre site. Um, and you kept seventy percent of that ten acres uh, open for resource use or open space. You would then get a residential density bonus. Of thirty-five percent for those, so on ten acres, you would have two units, two units. Thirty-five percent kind of gets you to two point seven. And you would round up and get three units on that uh, lot, so an extra unit would be. Uh, given, and that's how that works on option one. And then similarly on option two. The idea here is if you cap the home size to a certain space, you still have, you kind of have a similar structure where. Smaller home takes up less of the land and therefore is, has more of the land open to open space. Or resource use and. Uh, the thirty-five percent would be, or your but, density bonus would be related to um. How? Small you kept the, the, the homes uh, as on a tiered, on a tiered level from seventeen hundred to twelve hundred square feet essentially. On that.
Question. Uh, we had this discussion earlier how uh, square footage was not the best measurement for land use. I, I would love to see an option three that counted uh, footprint. Cuz really, that's going to say how much land you use, particularly when you're excluding garages, someone can build a tiny home with a three car garage. And yeah, I, I feel like option two is too exploitable the way it's written now.
Okay. And we could also not exclude garages, we could count garages within that thing, so people have to make a, a choice between. How much space to dedicate to garage versus how much space to dedicate to their living space, but.
I would offer a, another small s- amendment to that. I would cut it off impervious surface.
Mm-hmm. Oh, like large driveways would count against you?
Large driveways or a permeable driveway, or it gives you the incentive to have, you know, to build up.
I agree with that. I appreciate, I, I like, I like that as well.
Okay.
So is the direction to develop an, an option that is a footprint or impervious surface in lieu of? A capped home size?
Yes.
Or, okay.
And I would specifically use impervious surface because that gives people incentives to use pervious uh, materials and to. Decrease pervious surfaces, it's essentially low impact development incentives.
And I just wanna reiterate, I don't think we should be excluding garages, particularly in rural county. Yeah, if you do impervious surface, you're gonna be doing more than outbuilding, so. I think, you know, the garages are gonna get built over anyway, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I think by doing impervious surface, you're gonna mitigate a lot of the arguments we've heard prior to. Density bonuses or clusters or conservation subdivisions.
Do we wanna temperature check that just to show thumbs with what we've discussed? You can also use your miniscule stormwater permit requirements uh, as a justification.
I'm, I'm, yeah. You got all thumbs up, I think.
I just wanna double check on that resource use open space parcel, um, are we, are we comfortable with those numbers?
The only question I have about those is, is I think everywhere else in the code when we're talking about um. Building, we don't round up. You meet the threshold and you don't get to build more until you hit the next threshold, there's no rounding up. So I was a little surprised about hearing about rounding up on this.
I would agree with that, yep.
Agreed. You know, somebody that's in a one to five, but they own six acres, doesn't get to build two homes, they can build two homes when they get to ten acres.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And I do like that that's specifically about the uh, open space, which does get to that permeable surface. The actual space that's being used for housing. I just wanted to double check about that.
Thank you.
All right, uh, this next idea here, this next proposed change is on the manufactured home changes, so here. This is, the change here would be allowed to the four manufactured homes by right in the appropriate zoning districts, and what this is meaning to say. Is uh, currently for any manufactured homes uh, development of, whether it's to the four, the five plus. Uh, there's a special use permit that is required for them, and so this change here would be in the zones that allow for manufactured homes. If you, if you had the density. Um, or if you had the land and kind of did, met the underlying density to do to the four manufactured homes, you would be allowed to do that by right without having. To do a special use permit. Um, is the change there? And then the second bullet point is if you. Uh, had the amount of land to do five or more manufactured homes. Uh, you would have to do a special use permit, but instead of it being a special use permit that requires a public hearing, it would just be an administrative special use permit. Um, and then the last bullet point there is, uh, one of the changes would be. Uh, permitting manufactured homes in the lammert zones, so. Um, which came up in discussion earlier, but basically allowing manufactured home development in uh, the lammerts. Other proposed changes would include. Uh, defining and permitting supportive housing types in the appropriate zoning district, so uh. The, over here on the right is kind of the flavors of supportive housing that the. That this law or, that this change would be trying to ensure it complies with state law, which is. Ensuring that emergency shelters, transitional housing, emergency housing and permitted supportive housing. Are both defined in the jurisdictions. Development code and then also permitted in the uh, appropriate zones, um. And you will see that in the packet of which, which zones those are, um. Then there's the remove family member unit standards, um, from the current zoning code as well. This is also to comply with a state law that says. Uh, you can no longer regulate. A household based off of familial, familial connections or off of the amount of related members of, of a family. Um, and so we just wanted to. Uh, avoid any confliction with the state law there. Uh, especially for, I believe this is, family member units is a, is kind of a rare use, um, it doesn't get built a lot currently, so. And then reduce parking requirements for middle housing and multifamily, um, which was mentioned earlier, so middle housing would. Uh, be reduced down to one space per unit, and then for multifamily of five plus units, it would be reduced down to one and a half spaces per unit.
Question, or this is more for us, uh. What are our thoughts? Uh, I think it'd be useful to do a, a temperature check on limit of making the multifamily even lower. I think that should just be one per unit. If that, if we even want to pu- force one on there, but I think one and a half is. Too much.
What are you gonna do with a? Uh, an area where a person moves in? A husband or wife, who each got a car, the other ones each got a car. Another ones each got a car, and there's no place to park. They're gonna park on the street, they're gonna park in someone else's, in front of someone else's house. That's what's, that's what's happening right now.
It disincentivizes having a ton of cars.
Yeah, well, it happens, I mean. Geez, I, there's some of these housing units, you go over there and there's five cars parked in the driveway and half of them are parked on the sidewalk. And that's happening.
And I definitely think we need to have. S- code around limiting people's public cars or, 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 or public space for their private vehicles, um, but I do agree that like.
Good luck.
Yeah, well, I mean, but I think that's, that's, that's the more appropriate place to have that. Us preemptively uh, mandating parking spaces.
I, I don't wanna reward. Parking and bad behavior by making. Home developers have to give more parking spots. Like, I don't like guys that park appropriately or have fifteen cars or anything like that either, but I think that uh. Forcing the developers to make sure that there's enough parking spaces for everything is rewarding that kind of behavior instead of discouraging it. And I think anything that we do to discourage. More cars is probably a good thing. I think that I whined about this before, that, you know, one third of our urban areas are devoted to cars between roads and parking lots and. That kind of stuff, and I think it's hugely wasteful. Uh, I think that. I mean, we can talk about the high cost of free parking all we want to, but. I, I don't wanna incentivize more cars out there by telling people that they have to build more parking spaces.
No, you're not incentivizing, you're just providing an opportunity to park a vehicle, I mean, I talked about, I think it was a couple of months ago about the. Housing in Yelm that is just going in with the DADUs and the uh, the detached units and the attached units. And they've got basically uh, two parking spaces for the main home and one parking space for the uh, DADU. Or the ADU. And now. Inside the housing development. Their, their parking spaces are full, and they're parking on the street, and now they're parking on the street in front of the fire department.
I, I think an analogy that might be useful here is to say that you cannot build. Uh, dwelling units with less than two bedrooms in it, because otherwise people will start stacking too many people into the bedrooms. And that's, that's the wrong way to.
But that's what we just, okay, well, housing code change, other proposed changes, remove family memory unit standards.
Yeah. That's cuz we went to ADUs, we got rid of FMUs in favor of ADUs.
Yeah.
We just don't wanna call mother in law.
Yeah, and, and what you have, you have cultural differences between cultures, uh, you know. Asian and Hispanic cultures, families live together, you've got two or three families living in the same house with a three bedroom house. And. Each adult family member has a car. Uh, so they can get to and from work. But yet you're limiting this uh, space to one space per unit.
You, it'd be like saying that you can't build studios anymore because too many people will move in there, so you have to accommodate for it. There's a market for studios, and if your family needs more than a studio, rent a place that has one or two bedrooms. If your family has more than one car, rent a place that has more.
Yeah, I just think we're creating a, a parking nightmare.
So Sandy's got her hand up, then we'll go to Commissioner Bartlett.
Thank you Chair Day, I, I just wanted to weigh in on this uh, parking thing, it. A lot of the folks who are gonna live in this housing are people who work in the woods. And they are not gonna have a lot of options for public transportation, they're gonna have to drive. So I'd hate to see us penalize those folks um, by applying an impossible standard for them, they're not gonna have a lot of public. Transportation options.
I can add some clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so um, and Marcus, please chime in, um, so one thing that we got clarification on middle housing. From Commerce is that when they're saying that uh, it's one space per unit, what they're saying is that. It, it does not prohibit developers from building more parking, but it's just the jurisdictions that cannot require more than one parking. So there's a distinction between those two. And also my understanding and makers could, could speak more to that, that middle housing would actually apply. For urban areas, not in the rural areas.
Yeah. Yeah, I think both of these are parking standards, uh, mostly focused related on uh, kind of the changes that we proposed earlier in the UGA in the Grand Mount area and some of the urban areas. So, these are areas that. Is expected in terms of, and, and as it makes a great point, um, or clarif- in clarification that. These are uh, parking standards where you're requiring a minimum amount of parking per unit, it doesn't preclude the developer, if they have more space on the lot to add more parking, if. They have space on the lot or they have budget to do it, but what it does is it makes, it allows or. It allows more flexibility by lowering, the lower you can get it or not, uh, even uh. Have a minimum standard, it allows the developer to know within their kind of budget and wh- when they're building stuff multifamily wise. Um, how much parking they can afford for that. Uh, development to then distill pencil without reducing the amount of units, which also gets into. Whether they can make the, make the project work or anything like that, right? So it's just trying to give more flexibility, um, and. The builder know, builders kind of have a sense um, of, you know, how much parking they can get away with or how much parking. Um, they might need for the type of people that they expect to be living in that, um, in that unit or that building, so. Doesn't preclude for more parking, it's just um, trying to adjust the county's minimum standards.
Not how it works.
I, I, I think it does, and if we're, you know, the edge case.
He's, he's on, he's on stack.
Yeah, far be it from uh, like me, the, the, the like token communist to be produced for, like proposing a market based solution here. But I do. Think that uh, uh, we have a, we have, we have uh, a- as, as, as Marcus pointed out, like. There, there's, there are potential development incentives for someone who's trying to attract uh, rural workers. Um, or someone who's trying to attract someone to, to, to build more space or m- more parking spaces, and I think that. Putting that onus on that more flexible notion of like, what is this specific space for? Rather than us deciding that everyone has to provide one point five spaces minimum is a better use of our, our. Regulatory or, or zoning ability. Um, I'm, I'm all about not having. Mm, uh, minimums. For, for parking and letting, letting the market decide, the invisible hand of the market.
You mean not everybody gets a parking lot?
I said it one, it, it, I, it was a nice compromise. I agree, cuz I, I think like an edge case that could illustrate this well is, I would. If, if you could have twenty-four units with thirty-six parking spots, or you could have thirty units with thirty parking spots. I would rather have the thirty units with thirty parking spots.
I have an, an actual use case where this might be relevant, if someone builds a senior housing complex, right? That as part of the package, they offer shuttle service to a lot of the areas, a lot of the senior living communities have this. Them having to build a giant parking lot for a big chunk of people that don't drive because of a minimum that says they need one point five, doesn't make sense.
To, to, the counter to that, of course, is that. Senior living facilities have a whole different parking standard than apartment.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm learning every day.
But I understand where you're going.
That's not the only use case where you might market a specific housing complex as, hey, this is for people who. You know, want that.
On a transit hub.
And, and if I have the choice of, hey, I can, because this was cheaper to build, the rent is lower, but it means. The couple can't have two cars, they have one. But one car was getting close to getting replaced anyway, like honey, let's just sell the car and move into the cheaper place.
So. I'm wondering if we could maybe tie this to. Distance to transit. Because when we look at Grand Mount. Anybody that has a job outside of Grand Mountain has to have a car. Cuz there's no transit, when you look at the rest of the rural county. There is no transit. When you start getting into the UGAs. Then we have more transit available and more ability to lower our parking requirements. But I also think, I don't think the, I think what the market's gonna do is say. I only have to put one per unit, I'm only going to put one per unit.
That's right.
Nobody's gonna say. Oh man, you know, especially if we're looking for. Cheaper housing, nobody's gonna say, oh. I'm gonna put extra parking spaces here so I can attract these people.
So I think the counter to that would be that our underlying zoning and density does that, instead of distance to transit. You're not going to have high density areas that are way away from transit, they're going to be near transit anyways.
Grand Mount, those are fairly high densities, and I'm not sure if and when they're gonna have high capacity transit.
Well, it might not have to be high capacity, but there are other services there, for, you know, if you wanna get an Uber in Grand Mountain, you can do it, if you wanna get an Uber in Ethel, it's gonna be a little bit tough.
Or maybe incentivizes parking rides in areas that work or carpooling, like you have to disincentivize cars if you. Or maybe incentivizes parking rides in areas that work or carpooling, like you have to disincentivize cars if you want to reduce the number of cars.
Grand Mound's way more walkable than, you know, the north side of Offutt Lake.
And right now we are, this is, this is an inflection, like a society inflection point that essentially we're trying to create with. The culture that we have around cars and we will have this problem and it will look like this, like we'll have the number of cars and the, you know. Amount of infrastructure and space devoted to cars forever unless we do something different and if we choose to do something different, we get to live with the. Painful transition. That's kind of, I think, where we are, I would, I. How would we feel on the multifamily to go from one point five to one?
Just temperature check?
Yeah.
Majority thumbs up, but not not unanimous.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Passenger isn't here, but I think we know.
Yeah, he's already weighed in.
So and the other, the other thing I think about with the spaces right now, like. Pretty much everything's gonna have like two spaces per unit. That means that everybody is having to pay for that car infrastructure and there are people who don't wanna pay for it, there are people who ride their bikes all the time or might have one car.
Probably a great issue to take to public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. But I would, I would love to s- I would love to see our proposal have one and see what the public's backlash to that is.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm proposing something fairly bold there, is I would like to to do something that triggers a conversation.
I think you need to preface it with the conversation and it needs to be part of the proposal. What would you like to see? One or one and a half or two? And you you.
We really wanna drive some public interest, we could say, should it be zero or two?
Yeah, well.
And then it'll probably land somewhere in that.
Just a reminder that the Shirley Master Program document went to public hearing with several. Options that the planning commission wanted to highlight and have the public weigh in on A, B, C, and then people formulated their comments as such.
Yeah, that that might be a good way to do it, I'd love to see a zero option, a one option, one point five and a two, see where people land.
I don't think we'll get to zero, but I think it would certainly drive conversation.
The, in a lot of ways, the the spectrum of options you give people shapes their opinion.
And I agree about the inflection point, I think that this is the way to drive that conversation and to get, prepare people for the transitions.
Do you wanna be the front line or do we wanna kick it down to the next generation?
Let's do it. I'm, I'm ready.
This is for the uh.
Basically, UGA.
The UGA, right?
Yeah.
Not for the rural area. You know, the UGA we have really that we're talking about is Grand Mound. Which doesn't have the transportation benefits available to support this. Anyway, okay, I'm done, I'm off my clock.
That's a very solid argument. Huh? That's a very solid argument.
Yeah. All right.
All right, I think this is my last slide at least, um. So other than the last kind of listing of things is uh options and updates, so the proposal, uh the packet will have a couple of options to. To look at in terms of impact fee calculation, um and how that changes for residential uses. One, one option is focused on again, uh calculating the total like livable square footage of of the unit versus uh. How many bedrooms are in the unit, um and so. This comes from trying to comply with uh another state law that requires. Impact fees to be proportional with the type, um with the size and type of housing that is being developed so that you don't. Equalize, different housing types have different impacts essentially. Um, in terms of size and all that different types of, and so, and then the last bullet point here is uh an updates to the Grand Mound Design Guidelines. Uh, this is again to comply with another state law that says uh anything that go, that is. Bound to go through a design review process must have objective uh standards. That uh are, that are easy to understand and follow essentially. Um, I understand the Grand Mound Design Guidelines is actually kind of a recent document that got passed or was recently passed and so uh the. The strategy that we took here was to really not try to change too many thi- cha- not change the things we didn't have to change, but uh focus on the things that. Were very, either just very subjective language and try to convert them into objective. Language or make some objective standards that get at the intent that we figured was trying to be said within the design guidelines. Um, and so there's some updates in that section as well.
Maybe, maybe Steph can answer to this, do we have to charge um all impact fees the same way? And the reason why I say this, I could see a situation where if we have some ADUs, the chances that the ADUs have school age children in them are. Probably lower than the chance that the houses do, but the chances that that ADU needs fire and police protections as much as the house are probably the same. So it would seem to me that if we are going to have lower impact fees attached to ADUs. Maybe on, in some of them it would be worthwhile and some of them it's probably not fair to do and be subsidized by the others, so. That's just a thought.
I like the idea of calculating if I square footage versus bedrooms. Cause like you said, you have studios, if you don't have a closet, you don't have a bedroom. Hey, you can build a house without closets you can put in.
I think our impact fees now are calculated by bedroom though, aren't they?
I believe uh currently the impact fee schedule for your residential uses is based off of the, like, just the actual housing type, so it's just separated by. It's not necessarily by bedroom type, um currently, it's, you have a fee schedule that's for. ADU, you have a fee schedule that's for a single family home, you have a fee schedule that's for multifamily of a certain size. And then senior housing and uh another one.
Yes.
I think square footage is better. I still like footprint, and I like.
Square footage, the impact fees should be by square footage, cause you're talking about the impact of the, like you're on the, on the space.
Yeah.
I mean, I would also think about having some sort of uh impervious surface.
Yes.
Footprint.
That's not why impact fees are.
I know it's not what they're for, but it would be an incentive to.
It would align with our climate goals.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I would not, I would not wanna use impact fees in that way, I think impact fees should be solely for what they're intended for. And not used as a carrot or a stick in other arenas, I understand that, I understand your argument, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, well, you can't use it as a stick.
And then another note I'll just add, when you're reviewing this section of the packet is there's also some uh suggestions and proposals for exemptions. Uh, to things that would be exempt from impact fees like. Uh affordable housing or low income housing potentially gets an exemption from. Uh, impact fees of certain types, early learning facilities like daycares would potentially get some impact fee relief. Um, so there's some things uh in the exemption area as well to be considered.
I I guess, wha- what I would just say to that is, when we're proposing things like that. Whatever the absolute minimum they can do to get that is what they're going to design to, so let's not be too generous when we're defining those things. You know, if it's up to eighty percent of the thing, I think they will build to eighty percent.
Maybe I don't understand impact fees well, but it was my impression that these impact fees are passed on to the junior taxing district for the most part, so. If we collect a impact fee for schools from a new house, that money goes to the school district for their future building of schools. I'm not sure that it's our job to tell them, we're gonna hand out discounts on their behalf.
Could we look at the schedule for the impact or the the different, I don't, like basically the itemized impact? Assessments? And maybe be a little bit more deliberate, cause I think that question earlier about, you know. An ADU probably isn't gonna have the same impact as a single family home on the school district.
I like that idea.
Think we'd have a very robust discussion. Thanks, you can move us along.
Great, so I think that's it for um our consultant team, I just wanna check with the planning commission any final questions on housing or. Um, um, related to Grand Mound for tonight?
I think we left you with a host credit to another night.
We have, we have a lot to go off of, so thank you for that, thanks Marcus and Anisa, I won't make you guys stay on if you would like to sign off.
Yep, thank you, have a good evening.
Yes, bye.
Your time, thanks a lot.
It's eleven thirty there, so, good night.
Great, so I have a couple of very short slide, well, hopefully very short slides, uh we can continue having conversation at the. Um, meeting on November sixth if we need additional time, but I'll just give an overview of some of the other changes that are part of the code packet. The first is the military compatibility section, uh we are required to. Coordinate with adjacent military installations of a certain size with which Joint Base Lewis McCord meets uh per state law. And uh right now we have policies in our comprehensive plan, but we don't have explicit guiding code language in the Thurston County Code. So um there's been a lot of work done on this through the South Sound Military Community Partnership, uh that's a. Partnership with all the cities and counties adjacent to Joint Base Lewis McCord. And they developed a model ordinance out of a twenty nineteen report that they drafted. And it was great, they had uh suggestions for each individual jurisdiction and what you see here is what was recommended for Thurston County, they're all aligned so that it's. Same, um, the same things are being implemented regionally, but basically the changes here would require coordination. Uh, which we're already supposed to be doing under state law, but it would codify it. And the coordination would be for comprehensive plan amendments, development regulation amendments. Uh, that fall within this green area on this map, which is the military coordination area, it's kind of an impact area for noise and flight paths. And then there would also be coordination required on any sort of permit that's over a specified square footage in the pink area, which is so small, you. Probably can't even see it on the screen, but there's two very small areas that are pink along the Nisqually River, river just um to the east of Yelm. And those are the imaginary surface areas which are um basically departure and uh takeoff. Areas for the runways and flight paths on Lewis McCord.
Got it quick.
Yep.
If you could, um, if you were gonna put coordinate into a bucket that is more like advise or more like consent, which would it be?
Uh, so for most of these, for development regulations and comprehensive plan amendments, it will be providing them a. A sixty day notice so they can be involved in the process and comment appropriately. For the area in pink, which is where the permits would apply, they have ten days to submit a comment back to the county. Noting if the permit would be harmful to, you know, their departure or takeoff zone. So um nothing in the code prevents the county from taking a final action or approving a permit, but uh we would. Seriously wanna consider their comment if they're identifying something that's gonna be permitted that is not such a good idea or interference in a takeoff. Or a departure area.
Thank you, Commissioner Albersen.
Uh, has our change been coordinated with Pierce County?
Pierce County does not currently implement this to my knowledge, uh the only jurisdiction out of the whole partnership that I found that is currently implementing the model ordinance is Lakewood. And I did connect with Lakewood, I haven't heard back on how implementation of some of these things are going, but. Um, you, the, the language is almost identical from the model ordinance that was produced, so what we would have in Thurston County is. Very, very close to what would be applied in the city of Lakewood, except we don't have all the same sections, cause we don't have. Uh, all the same areas in Thurston County, they have quite a bit more military impact areas than Lakewood.
Well, I mean, the military impact areas in Pierce County is all over Pierce County. Way up to North Pierce County, that's why I was saying, why doesn't Pierce County have this if there's a requirement for it?
There is not a requirement to adopt the model ordinance, but a lot of the jurisdictions that are north of us. Have a better working relationship with Lewis McCord because they, you know, permit a lot more in these departure zones, the big ones are the imaginary surfaces. Um, that's where you can develop and permit things that could potentially run into. Takeoff and departure issues, so a lot of the jurisdictions have some language around that, but maybe not the full model ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the other components of this beyond the coordination requirements would be light emissions regulations. Uh, so fun fact, Thurston County is one of the last remaining dark flight training areas for Joint Base Lewis McCord. Um, Yelm and Rainier especially, that's a very important area for the flight training with the base. And the light emissions regulations would not apply to smaller single family homes, uh mobile homes and duplexes. It would be reserved for multifamily, commercial, industrial types of developments, the requirements are fairly low. So it, it's just a shielding requirement and that the light must be um facing downward towards the ground. And then the last piece of this is real estate disclosures, this is. Voluntary, but is recommended in the model ordinance that was produced out of the partnership. And that would just um require working with real estate companies to have a disclosure notice at the sale of property or when properties are rented out to tenants. I did connect with Development Services uh in community planning on that, that's kind of hard for CPED to enforce. Uh, so if, if there's a direction not to codify this, that's something we could certainly look into. Doing uh on the, on the outset without having that codified, just connecting with the local Realtors Associations and. Seeing if they're willing to implement that without it being uh necessarily codified.
Yeah, we have Commissioner Passenger.
I enjoy that you're using different use or meaning of the word ordinance. Um, if you think that green area on that map is the area impacted by base activities. You've never lived in Lacey Olympia or Tumwater. What?
That's not orange, that's the.
No, that's the impact area. Um, I'm very concerned about the amount of flights, you know, there's two types of flights that come out of JBLM. Airplanes, which are large and go in a very specific direction for takeoff and landing. And helicopters, which are medium size and which go every direction. And what we know from experience is that we have a massive volume of helicopter flights. Directly over Lacey Olympia to Tumwater, to the Olympia Regional Airport. Training exercises, low flying in the middle of the night, after ten PM oftentimes. Um, shaking houses, rattling windows, doing all sorts of things, so. If this says required coordination in time period, light emissions regulations, is there anything about noise? And flight paths for helicopters rather than just airplanes?
It's, yeah. This, this includes helicopters, so um some of that route in South Thurston County is helicopter, I do know they fly pretty regularly over the I five corridor, so I'm not. You bring up a good point, I'm not sure why that's not included in the coordination notice area, but. Um, this is the starting point that was recommended from that model ordinance.
This is about uh what we do with county development and how we coordinate that with the military, not how the military coordinates its operations with the county, right?
That's correct, we don't have any impact over their training routes or um the times of their trainings, they're required to meet certain hours of night flight. Training, uh, but we, we do have a responsibility to notify the land owners that live in this area. And also ensure compatible uses with our rural area, so um. I mean, we have similar plat notices for our resource use areas that say you live next to a farm or you're in an area designated for farming, you might smell. Um, same thing with mining, you get a notice on your property when you get a, a permit to build. This would be similar in implementation where you get a notice when you go to build on your property that you're in a military. Uh, impact area and you might be subject to certain types of noise, flight paths. Or development regulations if you're within that pink area.
I just, excuse me, I just point out those aren't military impact areas, uh they're areas where you're gonna have uh noise issues, the impact area is actually. In Pierce County.
I don't think they mean like physical impact.
I know, I, that word, if you get this out there. I mean, a lot of people in Yelm. I mean, a lot of people in Yelm feel like there'd be an impact.
Yeah, no.
It rattles your windows and doors, but it's actually quite a way to wait.
Rattles my windows and doors.
I'm all about the light emissions regulations. I think we should have stricter light emissions regulations overall. I love the idea of increasing disclosure, um, and both through notices and through, through real estate and really, really pushing for that. I'm as far as the, the required coordination and time periods, because of the unilateral nature of this, they, they largely get to dictate the terms of this. I don't know that like I feel a lot colder about that. They're already kind of enforcing their own coordination and time periods.
I would say there are limits on those. I mean, Banger has very clearly experienced with their specific naval aircraft that are called, uh, Growlers, yeah, that, that there's limits, there's rules, they have to comply with some things.
Do we have any ability to say that though? I mean, if we do, I want to use it.
I don't think there are rules. I know the, the city of Yelm and Lacey primarily, there is a coordination meeting with JBLM on a regular basis. And the mayors or city council members of those cities participate in that. There is information put out by JBLM when they're having artillery, uh, firing, mortars firing, heavy machine guns firing, et cetera. You can go to the JBLM website. You can get all that information from range control. So it is available. People just don't necessarily go to it and look at it.
I know Whidby has had some success in their negotiations on those issues. Whidby has had success.
I will say for my, my part, I fully support the use of model ordinances. I think it's a great idea. Or if we can use them.
A thumbs up on that.
And having a deliberate plan for how we're gonna implement coordination will go a long way on relationships too.
Uh, what is meant by the phrase time periods after required coordination?
Those were different.
Right, coordination and time periods. I'm sorry, if on the slide. Um, so the, there are two different timeframes that they can comment on. If it's a land use change or a code change, uh, like something that we would process through the Planning Commission, um, that's a sixty day notice. That's consistent with the commerce notifications, so there's not really any timing issue with that for community planning. The other, uh, time, timeframe that they get is a ten day notice and that's for permits.
Thank you, Maya. I think we can move on.
So the last topic is climate-related code changes. There are two new chapters proposed to our rural zoning ordinance. The first is on EV infrastructure and the second is on solar energy systems. So currently our code is pretty silent on both of these things. Um, I've been working with Rebecca Harvey, the Climate Program Manager at Thurston County to develop these code changes. And it really just, uh, brings them to the forefront and provides some guidance and regulations on how these permits are processed. We have kind of a process already for these, so what would be codified matches the process that we have for EV infrastructure permitting and also for, um, smaller solar panels. We currently have a process laid out for residential solar panels. Currently, I do want to note, um, the, the code that is drafted in the packet has the state law requirements for how many charging stalls are required with new multi-family and residential developments. So, uh, it's, it's referred to as the R group other, which is typically your triplex, quadplex, multifamily, the types of developments we would see in Grand Mound. City of Olympia goes a step further and requires that all of the parking stalls be at a minimum EV capable. So if that was the direction of the Planning Commission, we could certainly bump up the requirements uh, in, in the, uh, EV capable section to match what Olympia is already implementing. Um, for solar energy systems, we do have a process in, um, just kind of a standard process for how people can come in and get a residential rooftop solar panel system installed or ground mounted that's fairly small. This code change would have regulations for, uh, roof mounted, ground mounted of varying sizes from small to large and outlines those limitations. Uh, so that, you know, feasibly, we could get a solar farm permit in rural Thurston County and what the regulations on which zones those can occur would be. So I'll pause there for questions here.
Uh, yeah, so if I, if I'm remembering correctly, I think the, the minimums for EV charging as designated in the Washington State laws, ten percent of parking spaces wired and an additional twenty percent capable. I think that's pretty low. Um, I will point out that some cities have, uh, incentivized going beyond those thresholds. I think it's Quincy gives up to a ten percent density bonus for, for installing or for installing more beyond that. So that could be something that we could look at. Um, and I, I do think that at least maybe, I, I think Olympia's standard of all spaces is probably too onerous, but I feel like we should at least try to incentivize more. Yeah, I think Leavenworth has some interesting rules too about right-of-ways allowing sort of street level, uh, installations to, to try and help in some more parking constricted areas too.
So I do want to note the stakeholder engagement on these code changes. Uh, we've done some stakeholder engagement. We're gonna continue doing more. We've worked with the permitting, uh, section in Thurston County, Environmental Health, County Public Works Departments, Joint Base Lewis McCord has been part of the code changes for the military compatibility as well as the South Sound Military and Community Partnerships. We have presented to the Olympia Master Builders. They were fairly excited on a lot of the housing code changes and the density bonus changes proposed. And then the, um, the, the code outline has gone to the tribes. We'll be sending the full draft to them shortly. Um, again, to see if they have any feedback. We did not receive feedback the first time. And upcoming, we will be meeting with the Realtors Association next week. And we plan to have a meeting with Grand Mound and the Rochester Chamber of Commerce in early November. Still trying to get on Studies' calendar to bring an update to them. So lots of outreach planned on this. Uh, I have a slide on here on the Implementation Plan Appendix. You've seen this before. I just want to note quickly. We were trying to bring this to you at the next meeting on November sixth, but um, we're, we're working hard on it and it's just not quite there yet. So it may or may not come at the next meeting, but know that this is forthcoming and will be one of the last items that the Planning Commission gets to work on before we bring back a full public hearing draft. So next steps, uh, November sixth, we can bring back some questions you had on the development regulations and continued that discussion. If the implementation plan is ready, we'll bring that back. And then November twentieth, we plan to bring back the Housing and Climate Chapter with some of the updates that were requested from the last Planning Commission meetings, as well as a series of technical appendices that have, uh, the more nitty gritty on the housing and the climate elements. And so that's it for me. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Uh, Chris Peszner had a question, but awesome, we move on.
Uh, just a comment about the stakeholder outreach. I would just encourage and highlight at the end there, the Realtors and the Study and Chambers of Commerce. I mean, the last two are basically the same entities and same people. There's too much focus, as there always is, on developers and uh, I hope that there's more focus on stakeholder outreach for the people who actually live there and get impacted by it. And I know Grand Mound is a great area of focus in this one. So that one seems like an obvious opportunity to focus on folks there. Uh, we add to that that we learned that Grand Mound has by far and away the highest percentage of Latinos. And I think over twenty-seven percent and maybe there's worth something doing there.
I think Maya's highlighting specific outreach that was done with some of these codes. There has been continued outreach, um, around the comp plan, uh, in South County. Um, and a lot of these are ones that are being requested presentations. And then we are facilitating a lot of proactive outreach.
Chamber will always request it because they charge money for tickets to their events.
I'm not sure how much our presentations drive ticket sales.
That's why you're so short.
Can we let Maya go?
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Maya, for staying late with us.
Thank you.
All right, um, with that, uh, we'll move right along. Ashley, do you have anything for us in general Thurston twenty forty-five update?
No, I mean, I think, um, Maya is highlighting with the, the delay with the implementation plan. Our team is really starting to feel the, this long burn of twenty-four work sessions in a row. Um, and so I think just asking for some grace, um, we have been doing some outreach to some key stakeholders about the timeline and whether it makes, whether it makes sense in general to shift it a bit for staff, for the Planning Commission to digest all the information as well as the community. Um, and so I think Maya's, is working on what that might look like. But yeah, I think we're we all just want to have a little bit more time to sit with these things instead of just churning it out and getting it to you. Um, and then not really having a lot of time for reflection.
I don't know how the county commissioners are gonna keep up with this once this gets in their laps.
I think it'll, it'll probably be easier once it's one document. I think it has been harder to digest in pieces and then trying to track as we get feedback. What are all the different chapters that are gonna need to change to make sure that we are being responsive? Um, that's my hope.
I think that highlights the importance of this though, is that I, I do think that the commissioners are gonna be spending a lot less time paying attention to this than we are, so we have to get it right.
And, and I think you all have been doing an amazing job and we have some really committed community members that are here tonight and that have stuck with us. Um, but we have also heard from some of them that, you know, when this larger document gets put together, they want time to be able to look through it and have their comments really been reflected. Because we've been making a lot of updates based on all the comments that have been received, but they haven't all come back around. So when that all gets packaged together, you know, making sure that we have that time and space.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I know I'm reserving my red pen and highlighter for that point too.
Can I give you a purple pen instead of a red?
Okay, well, thank you. Um, do we have any staff updates?
We do. As of today, um, CPED has a new conservation program manager. This is a brand new, brand new position for the group. It is funded through the Habitat Conservation Program primarily. Um, and so they'll be working on Habitat Conservation Program implementation as well as working lands conservation. And I am happy to say it is someone you know that got, um, the position, Brian Benjamin, who had built our Streamflow Restoration Program from scratch. Um, it was a very competitive candidate pool, um, but he just has a really unique skill set.
He's great. Yeah, he's a great choice for that.
Yeah.
Really excited, um, on behalf of the county to have Brian in that role. So more to come. That, but that's hot off the presses today.
Congratulations everyone.
Hope you didn't keep, yeah.
Uh, if I have a question about, uh, Patsy Norton's comment about the Bar Holdings Open House, should that come in staff update or the calendar or good of order?
I can address it. Um, Betsy was kind enough to come to the meeting and alert us to the fact that, um, uh, my understanding is that we had posted the documents, like when we closed out the docket, we moved all that information over. We have had some funky things, um, with, once we went through this website migration. She was right. There were no application materials on the website. We did get it fixed the next day. We made sure the docket comments, which had always been, like, we had made sure to have on the docket page or up there. And I did confirm they're still there. So we have all of the application materials in the document section of the website.
Uh, I've only attended a couple of open houses and they were like three and five years ago. But there was a huge amount of materials, maps, diagrams, all sorts of things at the open house. Are you saying that did exist or that wasn't there either?
Oh, no. So the open house, we, this is very early in the process. Um, we were kind of joking that we had a whole process board and the open house was actually like before the process, the official process was even starting. Um, so it really was early. It is an open house that was more focused on process. General information about the zones, both the existing zone and the proposed zones. Um, and then we had, uh, a map showing the, the zoning. You know, rezones are hard. You don't have like specific development plans in place. Um, so you really are, it's like aerials, zoning maps, and then information about those zones. So all of that was at the open house. And, um, we're gonna provide a more in-depth, um, in-depth briefing next, at the next meeting, but I will say, how many people do you think were there?
Couple hundred.
Yeah, we had, we had a hundred and sixty sign in. There was a line out the door with four clip, signing clipboards. And we eventually were just like, just go, just go, like, this is silly, go in the room. So we're thinking we had at least two hundred.
If that weren't enough, it was soccer and football signups that thing too.
Yes, we had people who couldn't find parking and ended up leaving. But yeah, we ran out of cookies. We ran out of handouts. Uh, we were making our own sign-in sheets, um.
Fifteen minutes.
We were out of them faster than I could get one. All that's all I know, but, um, no, but, uh, yeah, it was. I thought it was a great meeting in terms of the civility of the conversations. Um, there was a really good blend of people there. My favorite conversation were two eighteen-year-old recent graduates from Tenino High School, um, that came because they wanted to learn more about planning. And I tried to recruit them to apply for future jobs at CPED and Environmental Health. Yeah, no, it was, um, I don't know. I get goosebumps. I love open houses and I love it when that many community members come out to just learn about planning. And that's what we really see it as, is an opportunity to just educate folks about why it's important to be in fault and public fault.
I don't know how many planners you had there, but there were people from the county, but it felt like there was about a dozen county employees wasn't there?
We only had seven.
Seven or eight.
Oh.
We didn't have that many.
I know that we were anticipating that large of a turnout and we're happy that we got it. It really was great. But, uh, you know, I've been at the county since twenty-ten and I cannot remember an event like that as well, being as well attended since critical areas ordinance days, so.
We can thank Mike and Rhonda for helping get the word out. I think they both did a good job. I really, they do get the credit because we have like our listservs and whatever, but I know that they helped get the word out too, so.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
There was, I, I wish more of you folks could have been to it because there was people on both sides of that and, um, there is a lot of opportunity to learn a lot of things about it. So I, I had a conversation with Rob Rice for a bit about his vision for it. And on its face, the project looks really great. I mean, I love the idea that they're thinking about putting a YMCA down there. I think that's fantastic. And then you listen to the folks from upnotout.net and they're concerned with it. They have concerns with both the project and the process. And I think that they're legitimate concerns. So I think there's a lot to learn on both sides of that issue and I can see where it might be contentious, but everybody was pretty well-natured there, so that was good too.
Do we want to start taking bets on how many work sessions we're gonna need?
Four, a public hearing, two follow-ups. The better bet is total hours we'll spend on it.
And, and just to be clear, next week is gonna be, Anna's gonna come give, have an update on the public comments we've received and, and, um, information that we gleaned, um, from that open house. And then I'll provide just a quick update on the countywide planning policy. Um, updates that also need to take place, um, and that are happening in parallel with this project so that it
Well, thank you for the update. Um, so we're good on staff updates?
Yep. I don't think we have any. Oh, well, we will be backfilling, Brian. If you know of anyone who loves Streamflow Restoration, very passionate about that. Oh, and also loves Grant's administration because he's gotten us almost three, almost three million dollars in grants in the last year that need to be managed, please send them our way.
That is a unique skill set.
They're out there and Brian is great to work with, so.
There's one, he's right, huh? Steal from ecology. But, okay, so moving on to calendar with agenda items and attendance. Um, it sounds like some of these Um, it sounds like some of these agenda items might be a little bit flexible. Depending on how far we go.
Yeah, or maybe we end up bringing like a template of what the implementation plan looks like. Rather than the full, fully baked.
I like that idea so we can get just familiar with the structure, but.
Yeah.
Helps us review documents too, I think. Alright, so we've got two meetings coming up, um, November sixth. Uh, it looks like we've got Thurston twenty five, Bar Holdings and Martin Way. It sounds like a busy, busy one. Um, do folks know if we'll be available on, let's just talk about the sixth and the twentieth? We'll talk about availability. Will anybody miss those?
I'll definitely be good on the twentieth. The sixth, I might still be in whatever. Hide myself in for Election Day.
Might have some people call it sick. Alright. Um, anybody else know if they will or will not be able to join us or mostly will not? Joel?
I might have to miss the twentieth, but uh otherwise I'll zoom in if I can.
Alright, just let myself and Tasha know if we won't be able to make it and we'll, we'll figure out if we need. Have any problems with quorum, but it sounds like we're good. Um, looks like the twentieth is climate housing chapter recap with technical appendix. And kind of like land use and UGA corrections. So we might wanna assume that's a little flexible.
We're try, what? Maya's team is working pretty hard, so I think at this point she's still trying to to get everything.
Okay.
Delivered on that timeline, but know that I have told her, please slow down if you need to.
She's messaging me on Teams about next steps on meetings, so she's not gonna. After midnight on East Coast.
Yeah, for all of you who have not gotten to interact with Maya, like she is a powerhouse, so.
Alright, uh, moving on to good of the order. Is there any good of the order?
I'm not trying to encourage this, but is there any update on dinner with commissioners?
We were. No, we need to ask about dates in the new year because we did not get a strong, strong participation for something. In October and then I think we just get into the holidays, November, December.
Okay, thank you.
And for Commissioner Casino, if you are no longer gonna be on the planning commission, because I know you're undecided, we will still invite you. Don't want you to miss out.
If it's at Mercado, I'll probably skip.
No, we're actually, so we do have that. We had it all planned out. We are gonna use a local caterer that purchases as much of their. Food from local farms as possible and then host it at Heritage Hall at the Fairgrounds.
That sounds like fun. They technically are public meetings, so if you're just not still.
Did you guys get something new at the fairgrounds though? Didn't you do something new there too?
We have a new caretaker.
Yeah.
A new fare manager?
Yeah.
We did, yeah, we did get a new caretaker.
Yeah.
We're really excited about that too.
Alright, if you are planning food, keep in mind that Bartlet and myself don't eat animals, so.
Alright, any else, anything else for the good of the order? Alright, I think your colleagues, thank you for having nothing else and having no other business.